Chair, we convened the Board of Trustees February 6, 2025 agenda. I'd like to report out that the Board of Trustees, after having gone into executive session, have any discussion to consult with Board Council, Richard Naive Eha Ordorman on questions and issues pertaining to the Board's powers, duties, privileges, immunities, and liabilities pertaining to the Office of Foreign Affairs Board of Trustees bylaws, and also any proposed revisions, and that there was no action taken in executive session as it would pertain to action item 2501. So trustees and for the general public, we are now back in open session. We have an action item before the board, which is item number 2501. And it is my understanding that we have an amendment to the current proposed action. So this time I'll recognize trustee Wahe.
The first amendment that was made, if you want to read it again, but just the Article 8, Section H, support and strike entire of that language. That's what we're going to be voting on.
Want me to read it? I can't read it. Okay, so the amendment, I guess I'll make the amendment then. The amendment will be for those trustees that are referencing the track change document. This would be on page 28. This would be, stand by. Number eight? Is that correct? Article eight. So Article eight, which is committees of the board. This would be item H, quorum and voting for committees, councils, and commissions, subsection four. And the amendment is to strike subsection four, which currently reads, when standing committees meet jointly, each committee shall vote separately as individual committees. The amendment is to strike that language. And so item H would just have three subsections, subsections one, two, and three, as it currently reads. Do you have a second? Or? Okay. 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 Let's take a vote then. Any members in discussion? Okay, roll call.
Trustee Ahuna has left the meeting. Trustee Akaka?
Aye.
Trustee Akina? Trustee Alapa? Trustee Galuteria?
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay? Trustee Suzha? Trustee Wahe?
Yes.
And Chirka Hale?
Aye.
You have eight yes votes.
Thank you. We have a second amendment. And who would like trustee Lindsay? Want to propose the second amendment? Kate, I recognize trustee Lindsay.
Thank you. I'd like to propose that we remove all references to a second vice chairperson in the bylaws.
In the proposed bylaws?
I make a motion that we we remove all reference to a second vice chairperson.
Okay, we have a second by trustee Akina. And then just for, well, act, members discussion? Discussion? I think I'll, one thing for consideration then is in scoping the additional vice chair, there were specific duties and responsibilities associated with each individual vice chair that did not exist prior to this bylaws update. It was the current proposed bylaws has one line or one very short paragraph for a vice chair. So would we then assume that those scope of duties and responsibilities would now be all folded into the vice chair?
Yeah.
I think those are good things in terms of training and minutes. And so the suggestion would be to take those duties and responsibilities for the vice chair or as they were specifically scoped for the two vice chairs and include them in the vice chair position.
Yes.
Okay, members, any discussion on that?
Yeah, I have a question.
Sure.
Just for the sake of asking. So like the 10-8 that we're talking about for the vice chairperson, it says that that we shall elect previous membership, a vice chairperson at its first meeting after the election. What if it's not at the first meeting after the elec-- like what if you're, what if the second vice chairperson is being elected at a meeting that's not the first one? Could, could they, could they do that? Because this, this is like, this is not the first, this is, the meeting today is not, is not the first meeting. It's like, you know, several meetings after that.
Oh, you mean if there was a, if there was a second?
I'm sorry, if there was a second vice chair, yeah, that
that certainly would be another reason not to have a second vice chair until these statutory, until this statute can be amended to reflect such the case.
But it's not, I mean, it's not violating it because it's not at, it's not at the first meeting. Do you know what I mean? Like, like we're not filing the all, all vice chair at the first meeting because it's the second one at a, at a leader meeting.
Thanks for, I don't want to go down the wormhole here. So, and, and yeah, just to go back to what I'd said previously then, Everett, just so we properly amend the proposed bylaws is that the the vice chair, in addition to the existing language for the vice chair, would also have the responsibilities to develop training and orientation programs for trustees, including materials relating to trustee roles, fiduciary responsibilities, and ethical obligations. The vice chair will also be responsible for the timely posting of meeting minutes as required by HRS 929. Basically, everything on page 17, items one and two, you'll, you'll probably word that under the vice chair role.
I, yes. So to the extent that this is the desire of the board, I can have the responsibilities that had been split between the two co-vice chair positions and place those within the singular vice chair of the board.
Perfect. Trustee Kaka?
Although I, I believe part of the sharings is that some of these duties could be done if not already been done by a chief of staff person.
Sure.
Sorry, I was the chair.
Trustee Suzha?
As the current vice chair, I understand my role and what we've been doing leading up to this point. And although my team and I were definitely willing and able to take on more and to help this organization, this board, I think the conversation with this current scope of work and additions was intended for two separate vice chair positions and two separate vice chair teams as well. So I think this conversation needs to be had. I think at another time or later date as for scope of work. And at the end of the day, I just want to say for the record, I'm willing to do whatever it takes. You want to give me additional duties? That's fine. And, and so I just want to make that clear. Yeah.
I'll let trust you, Suzha.
So I think another perspective too is that it's not just the now we need to think of, it's the going forward for future board members to have this and, you know, having it where, you know, what the roles look like and precedence and so forth. So I think, you know, it does make sense to further have a deeper look into this so that it is. Yeah. Because now there's other things to consider.
I would agree. Trustee Kaka.
Everett?
This might be what Board Council is discussing, but there is language that currently exists in there to assign responsibilities via from the chairperson of the board down to the vice chair. So that language could also account for some of those additional duties. I think that's what Board Council had maybe even speaking to. I would however, point to the first of the responsibilities that places the training and orientation program responsibilities within the vice chair's office. That had previously been with the ILM chair. So that may be guidance again on how to address that responsibility, either to move it to the vice chair's responsibility or to keep it with the ILM chair's responsibility again as currently provided in our bylaws. So the, the rest though, I mean, it, it could also be addressed again through that assignment of duties from the chairperson to the vice chair.
Okay. Trustee Kaka? Yeah, you know what? Trustee Galutera, I know you've been waiting. Go ahead.
Okay. You know, we haven't fleshed out the the responsibility of the deputy vice, the deputy chief, chief of staff. So it's just for consideration, perhaps we can wrap some of that into the deputy. I do know that the chair, you have some specific responsibilities for the deputy chief of staff. But knowing that we have, you know, now we have the specific responsibilities for the vice chair. And we have a, probably will hopefully move a deputy chief of staff into position. Some of that responsibilities to help offset the vice chair could be given to the deputy chief of staff. I just, you know, just for your consideration.
I think that's a great idea, trustee Galutera. It's a good idea. Trustee Akaka?
Yeah, so when would we be looking at bringing this back onto another agenda?
So we'll vote on the proposed amendment that would be adopted by super majority of the board. Everett will, we will vote on the bylaws today. This is first reading. Need six votes to pass. He will post the amended changes for second reading, which would be on the 20th for final adoption.
Really? My understanding was that in order to flesh out the details that this would be pulled back to another time. Is that correct, trustee Suzha? Is that what you were saying?
I don't think that's what trustee Suzha was saying. Mr. Chair and trustee Akaka, going back to what everyone was saying, there is language right in there that says basically a chair can designate certain powers and duties to the vice chair, right? I, I think overall, I just want to say that I think that pretty much covers everything because at that point is at the discretion of the chair, what kind of duties, say today, I'm just off with about attendance in here at function. If today he needs me to coordinate attendance at an event or tomorrow he needs me to show up at a, at a, at a meeting to represent his office and the Board of Trustees, I mean, he will, it's at his discretion to authorize that. So I believe everything is covered through that language. Correct me if I'm wrong, Councilor Chair. So I, yeah, I don't, I don't think it needs to be.
So basically the, as the vice chair's duties and the current language allows and the current bylaws, nothing would change. That would remain the same.
Yeah. And sorry, I had said it before Everett said his thing about the language. And so trustee Akaka, I apologize if it came across that I wanted to table this for another time.
Oh, so I want to make sure I know what you're saying. So what, what were you talking about revisiting later and making sure that?
Well, prior to Everett saying that there's language in there that authorizes a chair, that designates powers to the vice chair. I think that's kind of a blanket statement in here that pretty much covers everything. So as far as going back to the table and discussing certain duties or specific duties, I think that all will fall within, and this is just my take on it. I think that all falls within that verbiage. And I don't know Everett, if you want to weigh in on that.
Yeah, the chair, as the, as the bylaws currently reads, has the authority to delegate these scopes and duties and responsibilities to any trustees or to a chief of staff or a deputy chief of staff.
Yeah. So going back earlier for what I said, I'll, I'll scratch that from the, from the record. We don't need to go back and table. I think that'll cover duties that's coming from the chair's office and delegating to the vice chair's office.
Okay, so now we're discussing the amendment here. So my understanding based off of what Everett is saying is that to revise this and then bring it back to us to then vote on a later date. Is that not the case?
No, what Everett said was we would, so right now we need to vote on this amendment, which removes any reference to a second vice chair in the bylaws. Correct? So we can take that vote. And basically it's the original bylaws as we currently have.
Therefore, the, the amendments, the recommended or part of the, this action item, the amendments proposed for a second vice chair will then be?
Eliminated.
Yes.
Correct. Yes. Let's vote.
Trustee Ahuna has left the meeting. Trustee Akaka?
Aye.
Trustee Akina?
Aye.
Trustee Alapa? Sorry, can I? Trustee Galuteria?
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay? Trustee Suzha?
Aye.
Trustee Wahe? Chirka Hale?
Aye.
You have eight yes votes.
Chair, I have a question.
Okay, trustee Lindsay.
I wanted to know your rationale on creating a deputy chief of staff.
Sure. Thanks for the question. I was hoping someone would ask it. You know, Chair, after being in this position now for a few months and having an opportunity to interview prospective chief of staff candidates that we hope we will be able to announce very, very soon to the board. It's my opinion that the team that I feel can best serve the chair's office should be given the opportunity to have one or the other. And those two options are a chief of staff and a deputy chief of staff or two trustee aide positions. Not both, but one or the other. I feel like a chief of, a deputy chief of staff allows the board to build its internal leadership capacity within a board. It gives the opportunity to develop future leaders of which are our trustee aides and secretaries. It sets a higher benchmark for the chair's office, especially as those duties and responsibilities are properly scoped for a deputy chief of staff. It allows the chief of staff to focus on high level decision-making, long-term planning, stakeholder engagement, while the deputy chief of staff can oversee and assist in policy research, legislative tracking, program development to support the trustee strategic initiative. So the opportunity to, you know, if a future board or member becomes a chair and they have, as we all know, two trustee aides that, or secretaries that are with their current staff, they have the opportunity to elevate one of those individuals to a deputy chief of staff position, should they meet the minimum requisite requirements of a deputy chief of staff that would afford that individual a higher and more important title as well as higher pay, compensation. And it allows them career progression here at OHA, especially as it relates to the board chair's office. So that was my rationale. This obviously doesn't affect any other trustee office. It is unique to the board's chair's office. And it gives a future chair the opportunity to have either option. It provides flexibility for it. Trustee Akaka?
So I see that for budget authorization, that no funding is required, but if there is a deputy chief of staff, then that would be where their pay is the same as a
an aide.
Yeah, the aide.
So the, when the deputy chief of staff position is properly scoped, all working along with Cory and Human Resources, they will determine based on comparing that position to other comparable positions throughout the other state agencies, determine the appropriate salary wage band and give a range depending on the qualifications of the individual for that particular position.
And then I don't think that this would be accurate where it says under the budget authorization of funding is required because in time, that would need to go through budget and finance.
Would have to go through budget and finance. So as an example, you have our trustee secretaries and aides and they make a certain amount. This position obviously would warrant a higher salary. You would do a budget realignment to essentially repurpose the existing salary and add to it through a budget realignment to bring someone on. And you know, this is something that hopefully we relook at our bylaws every year as a good, fresh, clean update. And if this is something that you know, we feel like we want to address a year or two years from now, go back to what the current standard is. I think it gives the, not just the chair's office, but also the entire board, the additional flexibility of an enhanced scope of duties. You have a question, trustee Akina? No? Everett?
Maybe just to speak to that a little bit further, it also provides just the option to provide for the deputy chief of staff position. So it's not a given that it, you know, will be selected by the chairperson. But it provides for that option. So it's not necessarily a committed funding or expense.
I, I would be interested in knowing the experience of somebody who served as a chief of staff. What if they felt that that was necessary for them to have kukuwa in that or even, I mean, you chaired the board before in your experience. Did the chief of staff need kukuwa?
Well, everybody leads differently. And I did share with Chair that I couldn't keep my chief of staff busy. But you know, my time was not a normal time. We had COVID. We had a chief of staff that had hardship at home and was away one-third of the time that he was hired. So basically I did everything myself. So when he was working, he wrote statements and press releases for me and really he'd come and ask me, what else can I do? You know, so I'm worried that should there be a deputy chief of staff with high salary that they don't have enough work to do.
I can assure you, trustee Lindsay, I have lots of work for these prospective individuals to do, for sure. I will ensure that yeah. They're going to be busy.
Again, Chair?
Trustee Galutera?
Going back on what my suggestion was about ramping and deputy with vice chair responsibilities, I think should be a major consideration. And secondly, what we'd like to do is to find common ground with the administrator's staff so that the C-suite and the admin have, I think, a, you know, have, I think, a, you know, obvious process is process. But finding ways by which to work together is really important because as we move forward and we redefine Oahu's role, if that's what it is. We're just revisiting existing roles that we should, now this is a new time. And, and when I, when I hear our trustee emeritus speak to the challenges that she had.
Yeah.
We're beyond that now, hopefully. And we can like just go from zero to sixty. Uh, because you know, we're not saddled by what the, the um, what she was saddled with. So um, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm all for deputy chief of staff, obviously. But I just want to share that to put it in a bit of a context. Yeah.
I also think, you know, a, a deputy chief of staff can help provided they're as busy as they say they're gonna be, prevent burnout, um share the, in that leadership workload, help to mentor, you know, junior members of our staff, particularly our trustee aides and secretaries. Um so I think it's a good thing. Justia Kaka?
So when I read, when I read um what is proposed here under a chief of staff, the board well, I'll read the original. The board shall appoint a chief of staff who will who's responsible for coordinating staff functions and activities and shall act as a liaison between the board, staff and the administrator. And then going to the revised version or the proposed revision, the board chairperson shall appoint a chief of staff who will serve as a chairperson's chief policy advisor. The chief of staff shall manage all operations and staff of the board chairperson's Oahu and island offices if applicable while coordinating the chairperson's activities with other trustees' offices. Additionally, the chief of staff is responsible for coordinating trustee aide and secretary staff functions and activities and shall act as a liaison between the board, staff and the administrator. The chief of staff shall report directly to the chairperson of the board. Um, and recalling a lot of the conversation that happened in the previous meeting, the concern was that um tr- trustees' staff and the trustee are not put in a situation where they're in conflict and they feel that they have to report to the chief of staff and that the trustees don't have autonomy over their own staff and need the permission of the chief of staff and their chief of staff is the one who is telling them their daily staff functions and activities and what they can and cannot do versus the original version where it's saying that they coordinate staff functions and activities and they are a liaison versus overseeing them. So I, I still think that's a concern where to put our staff in that position and then the trustees as well.
Correct.
Oh, okay. All right. So then that is a change where it's just the chairperson's staff? Okay, so that wouldn't affect our, our board suite and the individual?
No. Yeah.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay, so then that.
Yes. Roll call vote?
Justia Huna has left the meeting. Justia Kaka?
Just to make sure this is over the entire action item?
Yes.
Correct.
First reading. Justia Kaka?
Aole.
Justia Kina?
Kanalua.
Justia Lapa?
Aye.
Aye.
Justi Galuteria?
Aye.
Justi Lindsay? Justi Suzha? Justi Wahehe?
Yes.
Chirka Halei?
Aye.
Justi Akina?
Aole.
Um, Justi Lindsay? I have three noes and I have five yes.
Motion fail.
Motion, motion fails.
Need six also? Okay. Let's see. Okay, we are now at announcements. Oh, yeah, okay, trustee Wahehe.
I have an announcement. Um, so my um my uh deputy chief of staff, Crane Akina, um he, he today to, today to the day is he celebrating his twenty-first, his twenty-fourth anniversary being at Oahu.
Wow.
So, so here?
So if you see him, if you see him, I'm sure he'll be happy if you make a big deal about it and approach him.
You bring your cake?
Um, I, y- yes.
So if I'm hearing that correct, then that would make it that you're twenty-four years here?
Oh.
At the board?
Yeah, I was aging.
But that, is that another part of the announcement here? Cause you went a year without him, right?
No, he
More than here.
He was here like ten years before I came. No, no, I, I don't kidding.
Yes, definitely the senior serving trustee.
Well, something to consider when it comes to service awards at the end of the year and acknowledging years served, especially when you hit a twenty-year mark.
Twenty-four years.
Right.
And so he started uh no, 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 uh three months, three months. No, was he a, no, it wasn't a year. I don't think that was a year, I don't know. I think we just
Okay.
Too much.
Right on, trustee Wahehe. We wish uh Crane a happy twenty-fourth anniversary. The officer of honor for his and mahalo him for his service. Justi Kino?
I apologize because I should have mentioned this just a little bit earlier. I do support continuing to work on our bylaws specifically in terms of some of the efficiencies that you want to accomplish and, and I hope we will continue to go forward.
Maybe next year.
It may not have to wait.
All right. Our next Board of Trustees meeting is set for Thursday, February twentieth, twenty-twenty-five. Look forward to seeing everyone then. Thanks for all your hard work today and we are adjourned.